So it's after 6:00. You ready?
Yep.
Okay. I'll call the June 23rd Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. You would all please rise and join me in closing the flag.
Alleged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first order of business, approval of minutes from the meeting of June 9th.
That's gonna be you guys?
Yep. So John, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the June 9th.
Motion made.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting of June 16th. Motion made to approve. Will I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next order of business is approval of warrants. I'll entertain a motion to approve school warrant number 1063 for $115,874.67. General and school warrant 1064 for $47,619.51. General warrant number 1065 for $153,472.43. And payroll warrant number 26 for $464,597.85.
Still moved. Second.
Motion made. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Financial items. We have transfer requests. So I got a transfer request from... Oh, this is a reserve fund request.
Yep, the first two are reserve fund requests.
Police salary account. They're asking for $1,340.92 to balance out the salaries due to the promotion of Kristone as sergeant. It was a $3 pay increase and it wasn't included in the FY '20 budget that happened halfway through the year. So I know Finance Committee has about $18,000 left in their reserve fund. So I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
Still moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next one is a reserve fund transfer request for the police overtime. And this one was to pay the overtime for the protest march that occurred a couple of weeks ago. So we were 1,246.05 short to handle that event. So I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
Still moved. Second.
Motion made. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Now we've got transfer requests. The Board of Selectmen are requesting to transfer $187.50 from sick leave buyback to the purchase of service. That's the remainder of the balance needed for the laser show that came out of the beach, for the most part.
Still moved. Second.
Motion made. Second. All in favor?
Right.
Question.
What was that?
Is this... I'm just curious, is this the laser show for the 4th of July?
Yes.
So have there been other funds appropriated for that event already?
For the laser show?
For the... I guess, yeah, for the laser show. You said that was just the remainder?
Yeah, we transferred money from the beach account to cover the cost. So... And that was just $187 that the money in the beach account didn't handle.
Okay. Now, previously appropriated, are they different yet?
It was... When did we do that? Did we do that last week?
Yeah.
Yeah, last week. Balance, request for transfer from sewer salary other to sewer superintendent salary of $6. I guess they forgot to budget for the leap year.
Still moved. Second.
Motion made. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Sewer salary other to sewer salary assistant, $90.68. And that's another leap year underfunded line item.
I move to approve that. Second.
Motion made. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
From sewer salary other to sewer salary operator account, again, because of the leap year he didn't count for that salary. And that one's 485.04.
I'll move to approve that. Second.
Motion made. Second. All in favor on that?
Aye. Learning opportunity.
He'll forget because of the...
Was this his first leap year? He hasn't been with us that long, so...
Yeah, this would be his first leap year.
He'll write it down, so he won't do it.
And I think this is the last one we have, correct? Planning board advertising and planning board supplies for a total of $427.50 to the planning board revolving revenue account. Revolving our fund shows a negative $427 for the second year in a row. So I think they have to bring that revolving account up to the accountants. So that's the... That's a request for the transfer on that.
Is that just... We have a budget. Why... I wonder if that... Is the revolving account different than the planning board budget?
Yes. Yeah, the revolving account stays from year to year. So in the general budget, if you don't use money in the general budget, it comes to the free cash money.
Right.
The revolving account is fees and it's set by town...
Fees collected?
Yeah, up to $15,000. So you take into the revolving and the planning board can spend from the revolving.
Yeah.
But it showed $427.50 shortfall.
Yeah.
So Nancy needs, for accounting purposes, to have that balance out.
All in my bill.
Yep.
I'll move to approve that. Second.
Motion made. Second on that. All in favor?
Aye.
And then CDBG grant. This grant money on the invoices? So what are we approving here? The $7,891.34?
And then there's the second one. For Leonard Engineering.
So there's two different invoices?
Yeah.
One invoice is for... A total of $7,891.34. And what is this covering? Oh, the housing rehab program and the West Side infrastructure plan.
Are they doing another house, I had heard?
They've got two and I'm... I think I have three more contracts coming in.
Yeah. So that's a worthwhile program because they're helping these people out.
And then the second one's $8,371 for Leonard Engineering. And that's the West Side Neighborhood Improvement Project. So I'll entertain a motion to approve both invoices.
Still moved. Second.
Motion made. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
What else have we got? Do we have any old business? So on to new business. We have Donald Doe has written to inform us that as of July 1st, he will no longer be able to fill the position of electrical inspector. And we need to appoint Troy Brown as the new wiring inspector. So I guess I'll entertain a motion to accept the resignation and appoint Troy Brown.
Still moved. Second.
Any discussion we had on that at all?
I just want to say that Don has been doing it... He wasn't exactly sure, but he's been doing it for 18 to 20 years as our electrical inspector. And I just want to thank him. It's a thankless job going into people's houses nights and weekends on your own time, doing this stuff. And he's a really good guy and I'm sorry, gonna miss him as an electrical inspector in town. But Troy has been assistant for quite a few years and he knows what's going on and he's willing to take it on. And we have an assistant, Keith...
Oh, Keith Fontaine.
Keith Fontaine has agreed to be the assistant, so at some point we'll have to approve the tool.
Okay, yeah. So why don't we do that now? I'll entertain a motion to appoint Troy Brown as the wiring inspector and Keith Fontaine as his assistant.
John, you may be able to answer this, but will that affect his ability to inspect? Because he does a lot of work for the town.
He has an assistant. So if Troy does work for the town, Keith can inspect it.
Okay.
And vice versa, if Keith works.
Yeah, they can't inspect their own work, but they need somebody else to inspect.
Yeah. Still moved. Second.
Motion made. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is a one-day pouring license for Still Hearts. And that's for the event on the Common. So we have insurance binder and the activity from... I think... I said 1 o'clock, but I don't know. I would think 1 o'clock would be sufficient to start, right? Unless you wanted to start it earlier.
No, 1:00.
1:00?
Yeah.
And we have their insurance on file.
I do, yes.
So any...
So they're having something off-campus at Still Hearts?
Yeah, it'll be on the one corner of the Common. We're gonna have it all hay-billed up, so people can just get a beer and stay in a confined space and not roam around. So that is one-day pouring license, so.
Is that for... I didn't have it totally filled up, so I didn't have all the information, but just beer or all alcohol?
As far as they know, it's just beer. They weren't... I don't know.
Yeah, I think just beer's fine.
Yeah.
And then I have to get him to sign it, but do you know approximate number of attendance?
It's hard throughout the day. I'm guessing... We have 250 hamburgers and hot dogs donated from Hannafords. So that's the number I'd use and throughout the day. I don't think they'll be there all at the same time, but throughout the day, I'm thinking that's what we...
I move to approve it. Second.
Motion made. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that's that. Sign a contract for the new phone service.
Oh, wow, I forgot about the stickies.
That's Terrance Bailey.
Just one signature or did you mean all... Yeah.
I think maybe just Dale.
So we're upgrading the phone system at the town offices, all the town offices, because the one we have is seriously lacking. We cannot transfer a phone call from the town clerk to the Board of Selectmen's office, which is right across the hall, so that's problematic. So when you call one office, they have to tell you, "Sorry, here's the number, call back." So that...
Can't do with a string and a couple of cans?
Yeah.
Or just holler, or run to the hall.
Yeah, you gotta holler.
Yeah, we can't record any calls or do any of that.
We can't like put people on hold?
On hold, yeah, so...
Yeah, it's quite...
And we have money for the CARES Act, COVID Act, can upgrade IT infrastructure needs. So I had put in for that money. So this is being covered by that money.
Nice. That's all the phones in the town office will be replaced?
Yeah, all the phones that we have on the system, right? Or is it just town hall?
It's just town hall. But it's... I think Terrance said it's easily... We can easily add other...
Scale up?
Yeah.
Okay. And I believe the... This is just for the one-time charges. It's $5,857.90, one-time upgrade charges. And then the phone service itself is the same as what we budgeted for.
Yes.
So it's not gonna cost us any more money to run it.
Right.
So this is just the scale-up cost, so. I'll entertain a motion to...
So thanks to the COVID, we get two phones.
Yeah. So is there a motion to approve that or...
Still moved. Second.
Motion made. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. What else do we have now? That's all the stuff we had for the agenda so far?
Yep.
Okay, public comment period? Anybody? Ethan, go ahead.
Sure. So I'm sorry if this is something that you have already discussed at your last meeting, but I just wondered if you might talk a little again about what is happening on the 4th and what the town is planning to spend on that and where it's coming from?
Sure. So we're having a parade at... Starting at 10:00. It will meet and line up at the fire station up School Street. And then we're gonna go in reverse order from Memorial Day. So it'll go up Main Street to Grove and then down Grove to the Common. And then we have like... We have some things planned that we missed. So we have a scaled-back version of Memorial Day. We have a dedication for the town that we've prepared that we're going to announce. What else do we have? We were gonna read the names of the high school graduating seniors. There were some of them planning to march, so we were gonna recognize them and their accomplishment.
And then the raising low the flag caps, read the names of all the deceased veterans of the last year.
Yeah. And then we have activities planned for the Common. So most of it is paid for by donations. We have donations from Hannafords for the food. We have donations from Northbrook Field Liquors for some stuff. We have... Who else? We need it from Algu.
I left a message on Al's phone.
I think Algu. We got some money from an anonymous donation. And the playground committee had some money. The Finance Committee put in some money. And we transferred some money from the beach. So that's where...
I also got another donation today for $50 specifically for the spend from Kathy Creveer.
Okay. Yeah, so some money being donated. And then the Board of Selectmen have put in some of our money. So that's where the money's coming from.
Do you have any other info about the events that you've actually planned for Common? What's happening on Common?
Yeah, we... Well, we have the... We have a couple... We have some music being provided by... That's what we forgot to mention, Tequila Mockingbird. They're donating the sound system for some music. We have events planned throughout the day for kids and adults. And then at night, in the evening, is the laser light show. We were too late to get fireworks. We couldn't get permitting in time and it was insanely expensive, so...
Light show at 9:00 PM?
Yeah, so at 9:00 PM, there'll be a laser light show. It's a patriotic laser light show. It's reasonable facsimile, but not as exciting, obviously, as fireworks. So I think at one point, the playground was planning to have a smores thing for the kids, little campfire thing with smores. And that's... Am I missing anything?
I think Jason and I may or may not do a duet once we see how the sound system is.
Oh, yeah.
You mean the highlights of our... No, you and I, we may or may not.
Yeah, I think one of the parts of the sound system that Tequila Mockingbird provides has the ability for the karaoke stuff, so that may be a small portion of it.
It all depends on the beer garden.
Yeah.
To follow up with that, I just wanted to sort of make a statement for myself and the Board of Health. So number one, I just want to point out, I believe the parades are prohibited until Phase 4. I believe live music is still not yet prohibited outdoors. So then also, this is just what I've written here. So speaking as a member of the Board of Health, as well as a resident in town with children and Beijing in laws, I want to advise the Board of Selectmen to reconsider and cancel this 4th of July event. Public gathering of this size with the attractions described that you've just mentioned, including a parade, music, food, as you put it, games for children, potentially smores, poses a serious health risk to Northbrook Field residents and is also in direct opposition to state regulations and guidance regarding COVID-19. With COVID cases continuing to rise around the country, as well as in Northbrook Field, health officials are unanimously warning against the likely... Of the likelihood of a second wave. So this is without a doubt, in my opinion, not the time to risk the health and safety of people that you, the Board of Selectmen, plan to represent. And just for the public record, I do want to read what the current guidelines are on this.
Yeah, I think people can look up the current guidelines for themselves. They're out there. I'll just point out to you...
So people will know, the guidelines are from June 6th. They're called the Revised Order Regulating Gatherings Throughout the Commonwealth.
Okay.
Majority of the things that you are presenting.
Yeah, all right. So now it's my turn. You say that the incidents are on the rise and that is factually inaccurate. I've been on the website every single day and I've seen, as a matter of fact, they are on the historic decline. Northbrook Field has 16 cases reported throughout this entire event. On June 5th, the state came out with their updated guidelines because most people were noting that the number of reported positives and the number of deaths had a huge gap of 80-something thousand people. So on June 5th, the state came out with the new viewpoint that 21 days past a positive test, you are considered recovered. So in Northbrook Field, we have two possibly currently active cases out of 16. And I can't find the date that the last two became positive, so... And the position of the Board on this issue is if Black Lives Matter can protest down the center of Main Street, on the sidewalk, all on top of each other, and congregate on a church, common, all on top of each other, then the people of Northbrook Field can march separated down Main Street onto the Town Common, where I will note that the regulations say that the people can gather outside in the public in unlimited numbers. And that's per the Board of Health agent that you hired. And we had a meeting at the Board of Selectmen's office with John Alvin present, and she said to him that the event as presented by us is not prohibited by the regulations. So we'll follow your Board of Health agent's advice on that. But your opposition is duly noted and, you know, you have the right to say what you say and we appreciate it. All right? Anything else to be said by anybody? Anything from you? Anybody else?
What was that, Tina?
You don't want to hear me speak about that. I just repeat what Dale said about the protest. Wasn't by my house twice. And they were all on top of each other.
Yeah, and of course, if people don't feel comfortable, we're not forcing anybody to join. So if you don't feel comfortable being in that setting, please don't be in that setting, so...
What happens for the people who work with the people who are in that setting who have no control over that? Will we go to school with those people or who are them remembered to?
So if you follow the daily dashboard from the Commonwealth, you will see that out of the 7,800 deaths that we have had in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, 4,900 of them have been long-term care facilities. So that means 2,000-plus people have died of this infection. So getting the virus is not a death sentence and it's not... As a matter of fact, it's 2% if you take out the long-term care facility deaths. 2% of the people die. It's 98.2% of all the people that do get it, that die, have underlying conditions. Obesity and diabetes being the number one underlying condition. So I, in the Board of Selectmen collectively, do not think that this is the problem that other people are saying. And I think if you really do the numbers, that is the case. That's the case across the country, too. The states that stayed open may be seeing a number of more positives and that's because they're testing more. But the number of people in hospitals and the number of people on ventilators are down 93% in the Commonwealth. And if you go to mass.gov and click on the COVID-19 dashboard every single morning, those numbers are staring you in the face. So I encourage anybody that really wants to look themselves, go on the dashboard and see what's actually happening, so...
I just want to make one last comment with all due respect, Dale. I would honestly trust the myriad of national and international medical experts who have said the opposite of what you are saying, because you are not a medical doctor nor a immunologist or anything of that nature. I don't want to argue about this. I just want to state that for the record. I think that you are not qualified to make that decision when other people have already made that decision.
All right, thank you.
May I address him and ask him why the playground got shut down? I don't know what...
Yeah, no, you'll have to address that at a Board of Health meeting with the Board of Health. I don't think this is the right venue to be in. All right? All right, anything else? Anybody else? Public comment period?
I'd just like to say that the Historical Museum is open by appointment. So if anybody wants to, needs to come down to check it out, if you research or anything, contact me either through our Facebook page, which is getting really popular. So just contact me through that or you can just Google Historical Society. My contact information is on there, so... If you do come down, bring a face covering and we have gloves.
Excellent. Hand sanitizer?
Soap and water.
Yeah, okay. Do you need sanitizer down there? We have plenty in the town offices to...
Well, actually, soap and water is supposed to be better and that's what we have, so...
Really?
Yeah. Yeah.
They're saying now the sanitizer has something toxic in it.
Well, some of the sanitizers can be toxic, yeah.
And they're starting to hurt people, I heard that on the news. I don't know what brand today was.
It tastes funny.
If you, if you wash with soap and water, like.
Happy birthday. Twenty seconds.
Happy birthday.
It's much more effective than hand sanitizer, so, you know.
On that note, Brendan, I want to thank you for posting all those things on your page, on the historical page. The people in town are loving it. They're eating up all that information, it's really good what you're doing.
I think I saw John trip in one of the horse and buggies. I was in one of those, yeah.
I thought he was building the railroad back in the 70s.
We whack it along it. Oh, you brought up the railroad. On another note, we have, I believe, one more day's work on the railroad, rail trail. And I think we'll be at Route 9 in East Brookfield. We worked hard last weekend, I had five or six guys down there and we cleared a lot of brush. And I think in one day, if I can get five to 10 people down there, we can get that cleared out. So we'll be able to see Route 9 after this weekend. So thank you, everybody that.
It'll be Saturday.
Saturday, yep, yep. So if anybody wants to volunteer, anybody watching tonight.
You think you're gonna get all the way to Route 9?
I do.
We're pretty close.
That's pretty dense in that.
Yeah, but we're pretty. I'm ready for it.
All right.
I want somebody to be standing at the other end with a bottle of water for me. Or whatever else they bring. We're that close, so.
Oh, cool. Oh, and I, what, you got something?
Well, no, it's 6:30, so we gotta.
Yeah, well, we got one more thing we have to do before that. Jennifer, I totally forget that you were on the agenda tonight, sorry, but.
That's okay.
We have an application to fill the town accountant's position. Nancy came back to help us out on an emergency interim short-term basis, so we need to fill that accountant's position. And we're hoping to have Nancy train this person because Nancy is, is very good at what she does and she's very organized, so that'd be the person to learn from. So we do have, we only have one applicant that's put in, put in a resume and it looks very good to me. Background in municipal government, financing.
Software.
Lot of software.
And business? I did notice when I was reading all this stuff, you forgot a comma.
I appreciate your feedback.
Just, I'm just saying.
I know, really.
It's typed though.
It is typed, yeah. Other than that, it was perfect.
Yeah, so why don't you?
Give me the spiel?
Yeah, give me the spiel.
My name's Jennifer Markey.
Can you come, yeah, yeah, he needs to get you on the video. Yeah, right over here is good.
My name's Jennifer Markey. I live in town with my husband, John. We've lived here for about four years now. I have a brother-in-law in town as well and another brother-in-law moving here. I've worked, as Dale said, I've worked in municipal government for the last five years. I used to be a resident of Bolton and I was pretty interested in connecting with my community, really, which is why I took the job for the town of Bolton, worked as the assistant town clerk. Prior to that, as you'll see from my resume, I worked in financial services. I ran a large development organization and support organization, providing record-keeping services for shareholders and participants. If you have a 401K or a 3B, it's likely that our system record kept every transaction on that system. So whether it's commissions, statements, front-end, you know, web processing, pretty much soup to nuts from all financial record-keeping, we executed. I've also worked in the tax industry, performing tax processing, again, with focus on software. So I, when I joined the town of Bolton, I had the opportunity to participate in the Mass Municipal Graduate Program. I was happy to take advantage of that opportunity. Gave me a chance to learn a lot in a really short period of time. And also, I think importantly, form a large support network of people across the Commonwealth in a variety of roles. So if there's a question, if there, you're already kind of plugged in, both from the instructor level as well as from the participant level. So that's kind of the spiel. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, though, as you look at the resume.
Have you met Nancy yet?
I have, yes, I was in the other night. I had the chance to connect with Tara as a new clerk and we were sort of helping each other out. I was in the other night working with Tara and I had a cha, I did have a chance to meet Nancy, just very briefly. That's actually how I learned about the position, to tell you the truth. We were chatting and it came up, so. I mean, I love the three-minute commute, I'll be honest about that. So that's a real draw.
Yeah.
And I will say.
It doesn't get much better than that unless you work from home.
Right, agreed, agreed.
You said you have a brother in town?
I do. No, not my brother, my brother-in-law.
Brother-in-law and somebody else is moving to town?
My, my husband's other brother's moving to town. On, I want to say Town and Grove, but I'm 100%. If the courts, if the courts would ever open up to do the title work on his place, he would be here already.
So there's something in town that's attracting people to it.
Yeah, I think that family has been a big attraction. It's a place where we can, you know, sort of all have a home base and be close. In this day and age, that's not the easiest thing to do. So we're happy about that.
Good. And we'll have to sit down and discuss salary.
Understood.
Perhaps. But I would, unless anybody has an objection.
Do we need to wait further or, I know we need to get this done, so.
Yeah.
Because we only have Nancy for a limited time.
Yeah.
Through the COVID situation.
Will you be around next Tuesday evening?
I can be, for sure.
Can you stop into the Selectmen's office and we can see if we can.
Yes, that's my idea.
Agree on salary and, because we have to work with what we have and what Nancy has got and see if it all works out, but.
Yeah, yeah, what time works for you?
6:15 maybe?
Okay.
Do our regular stuff and you don't have to sit through that and we'll.
Sounds good. Excellent.
Thank you, I appreciate it, Tom.
I was just kidding about the common.
I know, I appreciate it, though.
Because he doesn't have a clue.
I'd like to lighten things up a little bit.
All right, so with no further business, I will entertain a motion to enter executive session under exception number one.
And we'll reconvene only to all adjournments. Second?
Motion made second, all in favor?
Jason, yes.
Dale, yes?
John tripped, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, good night, thanks, everybody.
Thanks, guys.
Good night. Have a good night.